We've got one minute to go.
A pledge of allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first order of business is to review the agenda, make some changes as necessary. And I did have a couple. Does anybody else have any? So, we have discussed finalize and authorize publication of the road crew position. We may be a little premature on that. I don't know that we can finalize publication of it tonight because I'm waiting for word from John Zaltowski. But also, we're going to discuss the job descriptions. And I'm going to suggest that we... That's going to touch on something that may have to do with union negotiation, so I'm going to ask us to go into executive session to do that because it might be. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Does anybody else?
So then, we should put that last.
Yeah, we'll put that last. And then, I had thought that if we wanted to move up our discussion of the garage, well, let's see how fast we get through other things and see. So, we can always rearrange it as we go, but try to be sensitive to people's time. So, I would hear a motion, if anybody would like to make one, to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Paul's made a motion.
Second.
Steve, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. So, the first order of business to approve minutes of our previous meeting. And we've got the... So, this would be the meeting of February 13th, our regular meeting of February 13th. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then, we also have, I believe, special meeting minutes from our special select board meeting of March 9th. That was our organizational meeting. Could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So...
Shouldn't you have another special meetings minutes?
So, wait a second. So, this is March 9th. March 9th was Monday.
Monday.
Was Monday, and that was... Yeah.
And then, you should have the organizational minutes.
Right. So, we have two. Do you want to do them on one motion? So, one is from... The organizational meeting was March 5th.
Well, you just voted on a motion, so I think you better make another.
Okay. So, what we did was we voted for the March 9th. So, we've approved those?
Yes.
Okay. So, I hear a motion for March 5th.
Moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business is a report by Shelley Taylor, an embouché on the regional planning commission.
She's not here.
Is Hilda here to talk about planning? No. So, we've nobody to talk about planning.
She said they didn't have a meeting because of the weather.
Oh, that could be. That could be. We were just uninformed. All right. So, we'll have no report because they were... They had nothing to report. So, the next order of business is to sign our financial plan. This is our annual financial plan for town highways, showing the state funds per our class of roads for a total of... It has to do with our mileage. So, the state funds, $60,000 each, one for class two and one for class three, and then our tax funds, $693,000, which equals what our budget amount was, it was $813,067. And then, the plan also shows below exactly that, our expenses, $813,67, which I think people remember from going over the budget at the town meeting. And so, this would be say essentially that we, the legislative body of the municipality of Danby, certify that funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than the sum of $300 per mile for each mile of class one, two, and three roads. So, I'm assuming somebody's done the math, that we have 39, one, two, and three roads. We've got 39 plus 14, so 53 miles of roads roughly, and we have $813,000 of a budget. So, I guess I would say we're greater than $300, right? Steve, you're good at math.
No, I'm not. I make the motion and sign it. It should be covered.
I think we're covered. It's essentially. So... All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it looks like we all need to sign this one, and today's date is the 12th. Is that correct? Send it that way first. I'm enough of a nudge that I've got to do the math. It just will drive me nuts if I don't. Oh, yeah. All set?
As soon as I sign it, yeah.
All right. I could go on.
You can start.
Okay. Our next order of business is that, as we mentioned at the annual meeting, Charlie Bush has resigned in order to pursue a dream of his, to work independently, and so it's beholden on us to accept his letter of resignation. Let's see if I have the letter of resignation in here. Yes. So, I'll read it. Dear Select Board, this will serve as notice that as April 1st, 2020, I will no longer be employed by the town of Danby. So, that was received by us. Janice received it at 10:15 a.m. on February 29th. So, I would hear a motion to accept Charlie's.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Complete the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation's Municipal Roads and General Planning Permit.
Report.
Report, yes. We have to complete the report. So, as part of the compliance with the municipal roads permit, all municipalities shall complete an annual planning report. Please sign the completed form and submit by the due date, which is April 1st. There's also a newsletter attached, if anybody's interested. So, yes, it does say we have to complete it as well as sign it. So, we'll have to go down through here and answer a bunch of questions. And do they need it in duplicate? Maybe, because they've given us two copies. Let me see. All right. So, the name of our municipality, Town of Danby. Sorry. If I... I'm surprised that this wasn't filled out ahead of time. Permit number, if known. Name of principal executive officer or ranked elected official. Ranking elected official. Now, this is for roads. I don't think it matters whether it's you or I. I guess... Here.
I think you put down the road commissioner.
All right. I am happy to. Mailing address, we'll make it, at 130 Brook Road. Email. Anybody remember offhand what our... Although... Well, if they emailed here, Janice would forward that to you. So, let me get... Anybody remember exactly what?
Danby Town Clerk at vermonttale.net.
That's what I thought. Has a road erosion inventory being completed using the DEC MRGPREI template? That answer is yes, but they want to know the date completed, the month, and the year, and the entity who completed it. I said it would be helpful if our chairman would fill this out ahead of time.
Janice probably did.
Yeah. It's just...
Is there a deadline?
It's April 1st. So, we... Well, this will be our last meeting before April 1st.
Yes, because there just seems to be a lot of information that needs to be pulled from the files.
I know. And it's frustrating to not have it here. Although, I think we can add that. We know that we have completed one. It's just the date. We could probably sign and then have somebody else fill the date. This annual report shall be signed by the principal executive officer, ranking elected official, or other duly appointed. So, if this was assigned you as a ranking official, I certify independent law that document all attached were prepared under my direction, supervision, and accordance with a system designed to assure that qualified personnel properly gathered and evaluate the information submitted. So, here is our principal road general permit. Well, this isn't ours. This is just... And this is another copy of the same. Yay, the newsletter. So, I think it's just saying that we've done the work that we know we did on the erosion inventory. So, I think we sign and we'll fill in the date that we did that. We'll have them look it up. Janice will look it up. So, if anybody would like to make a motion to authorize Paul to sign the Municipal Roads General Permit Planning Report.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Right hand side down there?
Yes. Right hand and inside. I think what's a little bit odd is that's just a form. It's not really a report. So, where's the report? We'll have to follow up with Charlie. But I have a sense of déjà vu that we've done this before and had the same conversation, Thank you. Next is to complete our Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation's Municipal Roads... Oh, no. Sorry, we've done that. Next is fleet permits. So, let's find fleet permits.
Sure, I'll look at one time.
Yeah. Let me just... Sometimes, some others sneak in after she's...
Yeah.
So, let me just read out the ones we've got, and then we can do them all at once. Yeah. I think there's more here than what is on there. So, we have Fuller Sand and Gravel, max... Three trucks, maximum 108,000. The others are 69 and less. We have Procter Gas, which are propane and propane in tanks. They have a bulk and tanks, 30,000-ish. We have Davenport Excavation, two trucks, 60 and 76,000. We have Single Vehicle, Steve Newton, 99,000. We've got Mark Audi for 99,000. We've got Camp Precast Concrete Products, four trucks, up to 99,000. Duquette Forestry, Transportation Incorporated, four trucks, logging and equipment, 99 is their maximum. Who is this? Oh, it's New England Quality Services. It looks like they have tractors and roll-offs. Total highest number is 80,000 for weight. Structural Wood Corp, roof trusses, 80,000 maximum. Arcade Miles, C Enclosed, they say. Oh, this could be exciting. Oh, Arcade Miles has a little fleet of trucks. You know, boom trucks, they don't have weights, but they're not... Yeah.
They're longer trucks.
Exactly. Exactly. So, we don't have to worry about that. And we have Markowskis for... Actually, they do have a maximum of 149,000. I imagine that's one pulling, hauling equipment, and they would need that for excavation. And the Belden Company with one, two, three, four, five, six, maximum 80,000.
That makes a lot of money.
All right.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion on the floor, made a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And it looks like...
Just one signature.
Yeah. It looks like just one's...
You've got a lot of signatures.
Yeah. I could...
Did you get all those, Chris?
I guess that people did have the...
If you...
Doug Demme.
I'm really getting to the bottom of it, I swear. I'd only taken Gary's name, it'd be a lot shorter.
Get you a stamp. Have a stamp that goes to...
That's right. It'd be more fun.
Are these A U D Y?
A U D Y.
D U Y?
D U Y.
A U D Y.
All right. Nah, those are done. Review and finalize winter sand and crushed stone bids. Let's see what we got. We usually have others here for this. Oh, this is to go out to bid. These aren't the actual bids.
Yes.
So, that's why. I was like, this would be odd. So, have people had a chance to look at these? Did Janice send them around? Why don't I send them to each end and check them out while maybe we... See what else is on here that we...
These are requests for bids.
Right. So, what we're doing is we're reviewing the form that we would be putting out.
These are the same that were last year, right?
Yeah, I think so. So, I think in highlighted is the... So, bids are to be returned by. So, actually, we need to come up with the date. Oh, look. Hey. Okay. So, do you... Would you like to give a report?
Sure.
Okay. Well, absolutely. We'll get back... So, we need a date for when we want them returned by, right? Anything else we need to fill in there, Steve?
Looks good to me.
What else is highlighted? I think the highlighted spots were the spots we needed to pay attention to.
Drink it up, or you're just putting your hands...
We have to set a date.
I wish. Right. We have to set a date. So, what date are we going to set for when we want our bids back by?
When's our next meeting?
April...
14?
Thank you. April 14.
So, we want the bids back by April 13th.
All right.
Looks good, from what I saw.
April 14th, ain't it?
Right, it's Thursday.
Second Thursday is the 9th of April.
Oh.
It's the 9th. The second Thursday is the 9th.
It's May 14th.
Whoops.
April.
That's right. So, it's... We want them by April 8th.
Right.
All right. A 13 is easy to turn into an 8. Look at that. Sweet.
Get you up the desk.
Yeah.
Yeah. We would have been having...
It just didn't sound right.
We would have been having a special meeting.
It just didn't sound right, but I better check that out.
And we're asking all parties to give us a per yard prepay by July 1st, and I think that I've worked out with Doug all the kinks on that particular issue, so...
This year, we've got to make sure we do the prepay.
Yes.
It comes up.
Yeah. It is interesting. What came up with that is that sometimes there's a question as to whether we have cash that time of year to do the prepay.
Yep.
But I think for what little it costs us... Well, there's a couple of things.
Borrowing money.
We have funds we could take it from and put it back in. And we just... But we need to remember to authorize that so that he can do that.
Yeah.
That's all.
But it was also on there for July 1st, so we should have been started into that budget.
Yeah, but the problem is whether we have cash, because taxes aren't paid until November. So, sometimes, we're cash poor, but we have ways of dealing with that. I mean, even when we borrow, you know, at the town meeting, we authorized borrowing money, and even if we borrow money, it might cost us, you know, maybe $60 to borrow the money in interest.
We're going to save a lot of money on what we'll pass as interest.
Exactly. So, we would be...
Dollars.
Isn't that... What's that expression, penny wise and pound foolish? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we will not let that happen, and we've got a plan. Shelley, would you like to give your report now?
Sure.
Love to hear from you.
Well, there was no meeting.
Oh.
It was canceled due to bad weather.
Okay. All right.
The interesting thing is next week's meeting. I just got the email, they're requesting that we remote in. We did it for our...
Yes. We all may be doing the same thing. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Let's see. We've done bids. So, next is discussing and acting on our tractor bids. Unless we wanted to move our town... Well, let's keep... Let's barrel through. We're on a roll. Let's barrel through. Tractor bids. What have we got?
Well, I've downsized.
You... Okay. You've downsized since our last discussion?
I've been wavering on the boom part, and I think we just go with what we've been using, just the rear mount side. And did you open... I sent you an email.
I did. But that's the same one we had years ago, and what happened to that is it slides out.
Yeah.
And they hit a stump with it, and there's no give to it. It just bent the whole frame.
Yeah.
So, they had to put it back in the well, it's the only way. It just...
Okay.
And I talked to Morris today, he's on the Salem Trailers blog, he says that they got two of those, a town down below him, under the second one, they got two of them up in their stone wall that are junk.
So... Like a brush out? Yeah, I didn't know, but I know this one.
Because of that, it slides out, so there's no... There's no give to it. So, and he said what they've been doing, their towns are just making one pass in the summer, and in September, they make two or three, where they can see when the hell they're mowing.
Right.
Because they can't see, because the grass is so high, you can't see those stumps.
Right.
And if you're going along, hitting them stumps, he said, it's just going to... Something's going to give.
Yeah, because that one was used, but it only had a half an hour on it.
Yeah. Goodbye.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I don't object to going to just a regular one. He said it only extends out like a foot and a half, 15 inches, maybe 18.
Is that one there?
Yeah.
It looks like it got a couple of them in it, no?
Nope.
Foot and a half?
Yeah, I was talking with Tim about it this morning. I didn't take all the pictures, but he said it only goes out about a foot, foot and a half.
Oh, because that one we hit, that head years and years ago, it went out... Geez, it went up about two and a half, three feet.
Yeah, that's... That's way too much.
Yeah.
So, that's why you're hitting stumps?
Yeah.
Because it went out?
Yeah, it went up to Frere.
But isn't it the design of the blades that if you hit a stump, that it's a problem? Or... I mean, if you hit a stump with anything, isn't it a problem?
Yeah. You hit a stump with a...
Well, they're going slow anyway, so, you know, as long as we get somebody driving it that's careful. And I agree, and that's what I tried to get them to do before, instead of making all these back and forth passes, is get the whole town done with one pass first, then do the back, do the intersections, like up the Eddie Lewis's and stuff, and then in the fall. I agree with you totally on that, but...
That's what Morris said, that them other towns have been doing, that they're working fine.
Yeah.
He said because you can't see it in... Before, you know, June and July, because the grass has grown so fast, and you're just going to... He said you're just going to wipe them out. They found out that the hard way.
Yeah.
So, that's the mower, what tractor?
Uh, I've got all the paperwork's on the back. It's, uh... This here.
Oh.
And it's... Got all the cost in there without everything, with the loaded tires and...
So, this is... It's a case?
Yeah. That's the one that they said that a lot of the towns are using that going... The only reason we had to check down that bigger one is because we're going to have a boom on it.
Right.
And one of these would not support it, because they don't have enough weight. And so, this one here will support that six foot.
On the rear, the rear mount, the one we just saw?
Yeah. And then, on the back, it's down to the calf.
So, this is 90 horsepower?
Yeah.
Well, actually, 110 is the engine, the PTO's 90. Is that right?
Yeah.
But Morris said that they tried it with a smaller tractor, and they just had to keep adding weights on the one tire.
That's what we had to do with a Coyote, basically. And that tractor was way too small to start with.
Well, and if we put too big a mower on a tractor, don't we end up with problems?
Yeah. Yeah. And also, the goal of this is, Tim got me onto this Sourcewell, and the tractor original cost is $91,000. And with the Sourcewell, it goes for municipalities and towns can sign up. I'm not sure what the other ones are, but he sent me the form, and I sent it to Colette today to have Janice fill it out and send it in. There's no cost, but it's 29% discount. So, the tractor costs went from 91,000 down to the low 70s. So, and that's tractor and the equipment and everything.
Can I just see? So, who is Sourcewell? Formerly NJPA. So, it's a public entity, its creation was authorized in Minnesota statute. Yeah, of course, Minnesota, committed to engage in cooperative purchasing.
And it's not just Salem. It's a lot of other businesses that they're in tied in with this company, and I'm not sure how many other ones. I don't know if that would pertain to trucks, if it contained other equipment. But that's 29% off of just about every purchase.
NJPA's announced Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Advantages.
79,000 for the Morris tractor, but it's a discount.
That's with everything. That's the loaded tires, the safety lights. I've got it all scratched in here. Oh, yeah.
So, what it is, is they're combining the buying power of more than 50,000 government education and nonprofit organizations. Sourcewell holds hundreds of competitively solicited cooperative contracts. So, I guess if you become members, my guess is that there's a fee.
He didn't say anything about it. He said just to sign up. And I looked at the form he sent me, and you can actually... Of course, I'm not that... He didn't say anything about it. He said just to sign up. And I, I looked at the form he sent me, and you can actually, of course, I'm not that good with a computer, but I see they were hi- are highlighted, and I went in and clicked on it, and you can actually fill it out, the three pages online.
Sourcewell membership is free with no obligations to purchase. We offer membership to all government agencies, public and private schools, colleges, tribal governments, and nonprofit organizations.
So that knocked, um.
See if our organization is already a member. Do you think it's possible we?
I don't know, it never was checked into or whatever before, but it would've been nice.
I'm just curious to see. No, there's no results, so it doesn't look like something we've done before.
But there's a lot of them that do it, he said, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to stick with that price, same.
Yeah. Well, I told him to hold on to the mower, because that may go quick, just so we can get a chance to, you know, decide what we wanna do. The tractor is in stock over there. Like he said, they had two of them.
Years, they've been in business for forty years.
So it knocked it down from ninety thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars down to sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, thirty thousand dollar, near thirty thousand dollar knockoff.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Hmm.
And once we're in it, I guess, from what Tim was saying, I'll find out more, but whenever we purchase something, we just check, see if they're associated with this, um, Shorewell, or.
Sourcewell.
Yeah, and, um, then we get discounts. So, I think it's worth a, worth a shot.
So what was the total on the tractor and mower?
Uh, seventy, that's loaded tires.
And that's for tractor and mower?
And mower. Mower's twelve. I can, I can, I just turn these off, I can have them.
Roughly seventy-five?
Copy them.
Roughly seventy-five for the two of them, is that what you're saying?
Uh, total with every, of course, you got the ship in and put together, but the total's seventy-nine, five, forty-seven.
Okay.
And that's ready to roll.
And the tractor that we've got that keeps splitting apart and falling apart, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the other thing.
(laughing).
Uh, I said, what can we expect to get for that? And Tim remembered it from a few years ago, and he said, I would put in for twelve-five, and, um, so that'll, you know, maybe take anything.
So that brings it down to sixty-seven?
Yeah, and, you know, we may not get that for it, but.
Right.
But he said to put it in on, uh, the state, I think Brad mentioned something the other day, the, the state website that sells the equipment and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe some small town or something will pick it up. Because it will make a good, you know, it is a small mower, but you don't have a lot to do.
Big enough for what we have to do.
Did I per say anything on trade?
Nope, didn't want a Coyote.
Everybody wants one.
Nope.
Everybody wants one. Okay. Um, are, are you all who know tractors, because I have to confess that, what do I know about a tractor? I mean, I know mine.
Well, I've never owned a case, but from what I've been hearing, they're the one that's the most rugged now for that type of equipment. So I don't, I'm just going by.
Are those of you who know tractors in agreement that that's the tractor for us?
I'm a Ford man, so I don't know nothing about it.[877.62][877.63](laughing).
And we got a John Deere guy over there.
Well, I was told don't go green, blue, or orange, so. I got orange, you got green, and you got blue, so that leaves us out. So we go with red, I guess.
Well, at least we're being neutral.
Well, I was for the red tractor, but before, we were looking at big tractors.
Yeah.
As far as this Fermo.
Well, it's a, it's still a case.
It's still a case, but it's a lighter tractor. It's a much lighter tractor.
He said it will do everything it's supposed to, and it's rugged and everything, so, um.
That's the same size it honestly got, I think, he said.
Yeah.
And he got a case, too?
And he does all the road sides. You know, he's got three of them, I think, going, so.
Oh, that's right, he does all the roadside, so that's what he's using, that's primarily what we want it for. Oh, but I noticed that it's got a decent sized bucket on it, can we use that for loading as well?
Yep, it's got seven, seven foot bucket on it, and it.
So it could load our tandems?
Should probably get some in it. I, I mean, especially when they use the ramp.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
And it could definitely load, load the lighter truck.
It'll be something that, down the road, where we can get a broom and do the sweeping with it, instead of hauling the other one around on the cob job we got, basically. And then possibly, you know, getting a good york rake that we can do the angle for when they do grade the roads with a crown, that keeps a crown in it, not push it back on the side of the road again.
Hmm.
I'm just looking into the future.
Well, that's big, because that's part of our agreement with the, um, you know, our roads department, we have to.
This Coyote lasted fifteen years, which I never thought it would make it. So.
Yeah.
Got a lot of maintenance on it, right Doug?
Yeah.[994.40][994.41](laughing).
It's been rebuilt twice, yeah, yeah. Um.
But got a lot of work out of it, too.
Yeah. So I guess that's one thing, when you say for it, it did hold up, so.
Fifteen years of mowing the road sides.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you, if you figure fifteen years, what you put in the maintenance is still pretty well.
Yep.
Um, did you look into, um, so we do, we do have funds in our equipment fund, and so we could purchase this outright, but did we look into what they might be offering for, um, any, if we were to borrow it?
No. I'm just mainly trying to get the information.
Sometimes the interest, interest rates are so good, and actually, it's very interesting to think about what's gonna happen to all the prices and things like this right now. Who knows? Yeah, I know.
Everything else is going that way.
Hmm.
Was that a cash price, or was that a list price?
Uh, just, it said total product and delivery price. So, may go cheaper on cash, not sure.
Seventy-five for cash, I see. Never know. Don't hurt.
I can find out.
Well, how do you all want to proceed? Do you want to authorize Paul to go and negotiate? Do you want to, um, have him go and find out those?
If you wanna go over and take a look at it, he said there's two on the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the, I think he said one was a C and one was a U, and this one was a heavier built one, and basically the same with the transmissions and stuff.
Doug and Steve, do you wanna go take a look at it before we make a decision? I mean, I, I, did he say that, i- is he telling us that, you know, you buy that in the next twenty-four hours if the deal goes, or is he, yeah?
Isn't it till the end of the month, the deal?
I would say until we, no, they probably ain't gonna hold on to it forever, but I said just hold on till we have our meeting, and we'll discuss it, and then, um, either take a look at it. The main thing I was concerned with is possibility of the brush hog, because that's a good buy on that, and, um, being it was only used for half an hour, and. But, yeah, I just will take a ride over and take a look at it if the other guys wanna, or whoever wants to go over and look at it.
Thanks for including me, but I don't think I'd be much good to you.
Yeah, but no, you might find something you wanna buy.
Well, no, it's true. I actually love looking at equipment.
Instead of getting rid of your Ford truck.
(laughing) I have a John Deere.
Oh, John Deere.
Yeah. So, um, so do you wanna leave it at that, that, that you all will either together or separate, get, get a point of looking at it in the next few days, and then we can, we can always, i- if we feel we have to act soon, we can always call a special meeting? We could call people by phone if we needed to. And I, I think when you're there, too, is also, I would see if they are offering financing or cash, because it's, it's worth us looking at what the interest rates are and thinking about our cash and other things. I mean, I don't, let's just hear the facts, and then we can make a decision about that.
I can find out that in the morning, I'll just give Tim a call, but, and this is kinda, I told Tim, you, um, because I went in, talked to Tim, and Steve went in, talked to Jack, Doug was talking with Morris, so we had.
And Jack's always been the town salesman.
Yeah, well, I didn't know that, because I bought mine from Jack years ago.
Do they work on commission?
Jack and Morris.
They work on commission.
Yeah.
And Jack was the salesman fifteen years ago for the town.
Okay.
And he's the one that brought the John Deere tractor in for us to try, I think when Dan was on the board, do you remember that, Dan?
Which one?
We brought a John Deere tractor in.
Brought it in and tried it, but he didn't join.
Right.
Someone decided not to join.
Right, so, you know.
So you think we should be doing business with him?
I would feel better if we were doing it with Jack, but.
I, I got no objection, I just know Tim personally, because I buy stuff through Tim, and most of the other guys are busy anyways, I did, he just happened to be there, and I just ran it by, and I said, I know Jack was the original one to talk with, and he said, well, it's basically, they're not gonna be duking it out.
Yeah, they'll work it out. If you told them that, they'll work it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, they will. They're, they're good. I always dealt with Morris.
Alright, so, you'll take a look, and then we'll regroup from there, and if we need a special meeting, we'll call it. Okay.
I can go look at it within a week.
I'd say, it's gonna be raining all day tomorrow, but whatever your guys schedule.
I gotta do beast tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
When I get back, I can go.
Tomorrow's shot for me, so.
Yeah. Let's go for first order next week, or whatever, whatever, just let me know.
Yeah, but let's try to do it within the week, so that we have time to make a decision before.
I'll just let, I'll just let them know though.
Alright, okay. Alright.
I'll make sure Janice, Collette said she left her note on this, uh, Sourcewell, and then I'll make sure she fills it out and gets it sent out.
It might be interesting to check with a couple of the towns that are in it, and just make sure that they're.
Yeah, I, I never heard of it before.
Yeah, that's why I, I just, I don't know, I just always worry about things that sound too good to be true. Yeah.
Come repossess your truck.
Well, on the quotes that I got from Pete's Equipment, they have Sourcewell listed on there.
They do also. Okay. So it must be a common thing, we just didn't know. Well, I'm glad to learn about it, then. Okay, um, so next on our list is discussing and authorizing the advertisement for the sale of the town hall. Um, I should've changed that on the agenda, too. Um, so I did speak, I spoke with John Thrasher today after we, um, did the research on the septic, um, and he said that he wants to go back over his file, because remember, that packet of stuff we were looking at, a lot of that was from John. Um, he, he was basically scratching his head, not sure how to advise us exactly to proceed, and, um, I talked to him, I got ahold about three o'clock today, so I, I don't have that answer yet, but we should have it shortly. So I guess Brad and I had kinda taken the lead on that, so when I hear from him, maybe you and I can talk about it, Brad, and then we can figure out where we go from there.
One thing, the town hall ain't going nowhere. Still gonna stand there, so what's a few more days?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's true. But, but I think that we all, you know, do feel like, if we're gonna do something, we wanna make sure we keep the ball rolling, so it is rolling, and he's dealing with that issue.
That guy gonna play it, put his fruit stand in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Spring is a good time to sell things, because people have the summer to work on it.
Um, so we then are to our town garage discussion. So the town garage, the vote came in with a, what was it, eleven, eleven point spread difference, something like that, for those in favor of us researching and.
Not vote.
We don't count them, you just gotta count ones that voted.
Well, it's, there's no clear mandate.
Yeah, I think that's what it comes down to, is, is that it's pretty well split, even, even. So the question is, what do we want to do? Do we want to, um, do we want to investigate, um, the cost of the new one? Do we want to first investigate the cost of preparing what we have? Where do we wanna start?
I thought to tax pay, all the tax group ones voted to have this one fixed, not to put up a new one.
There, there were eleven points more to vote to fix this, well, actually, they didn't vote to fix this one. I think the exact wording was that they voted to not research the cost of a new one, which essentially is.
Yeah, same, yeah, we don't need a new one.
Yeah.
I thought it was a larger spread than that.
No, I'm pretty sure it was eleven votes.
Okay.
And thirty-nine just left it blank, for whatever reason.
Just like we did here, fix what we got.
I don't really wanna put a million dollars in the new town garage.
Let's see, yeah, sure, please.
Uh, when I, when I was on the board six or seven years ago, we looked into replacing this front right on the site.
Put it on the right?
Right, right on the site.
Right.
Not purchasing a piece of land or anything, and I, the figures that were put out last week. From two fifty to, might have it for a million dollars. Wow. There's no way we're gonna purchase a piece of property, drill the well, put a septic system in, and build a new building for two hundred and fifty dollars. Nothing, just wasn't gonna happen. About six or seven years ago, when I was on the board and Chip Wright was the chair, we, we looked into thoroughly, thoroughly setting a price to replace this building. I personally, I personally, being, I've got a contract for all my life. What's out there isn't worth repairing. I would not bother repairing that, I certainly were looking to removing it and putting a new building in its place. And, and before I go too much further, there was talk about us tying in with, uh, Montevera and opening the recycling center. Open to Mount, open to Mount Eber, and if you did that, you'd have a little more room, have a little more room. I, I can't remember the figures, and I called Chip Wright just about an hour before I came over here. I thought maybe he's gonna have them.
Really, do you remember? Yeah.
And he said, Dan, I'm not sure if I still have them, I have a box full of stuff, but, um, he said, I'm going out to dinner right now, I'm going to the doctor in the morning, but I will get back to you tomorrow. So, uh, the figure that we had gotten, I believe, I believe, I might be mistaken, but we got gone over and talked with, uh, Morton Building over in Chassleton, they came here and talked with us, they, they looked at the site, they put a price together, and I, I'm not, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was like two sixty, two fifty, yeah, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to remove that building, put a brand new one in its place, insulated, baiting it heat in the fall. And for whatever reason, I don't recall what the reason was, it didn't go anywhere, but.
But you're suggesting that we might want to, that one thing we might wanna do is researching this, is maybe to contact them again and see what their prices would be today?
Well, I, I, again, I asked Chip to look for the paperwork.
Yeah, but that was how many years ago?
Quite a few years ago.
So we, we would have to get them to.
Six or seven years.
Yeah.
Price maybe more.
Yeah, sure, but, but I think what you're saying is it's worth finding out.
I don't think it's gonna be a million dollars. I know it's gonna be five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand, but you're gonna, to, to, to put money into that, before we put money into that, I would suggest to find out just what it's gonna cost to repair that building.
Right.
But if, if it's.
Right, if repairing it is, is, if repairing it's a hundred and eighty thousand, and we can get a whole new one for two hundred and fifty, why wouldn't we do that?
I, I just, I mean, take a good look at that building, anybody that knows building, take a good look at that building. Come on.
Yeah.
So anyways, I'm here to, I'm here to offer, and myself and Chip Wright, give us some money, move over to Morton, talk with them, have them come here, maybe set up another meeting for the board, let's get a price together. Dr. McCarthay, it didn't cost us anything then, I don't believe it'll cost anything now. Just put a price together to remove that building and put a new one in its place, something that the town can be proud of.
How do people feel about that?
That's another option. Morton Buildings are good.
And, and, and having options to consider. And, and, and having options to consider, I'd rather have more options to consider than less, there's nothing, no harm in getting the, the option.
Well, what were, what were the, uh, what, what did you think? What, what, what were your people thinking to do with it? I mean, repair it, how much are you willing to spend on it?
Well, so, so our, our thoughts had been to maybe repair it, but we really hadn't gotten further than knowing that we do, we know we've got an asbestos issue that has to be abated, and then we know that there are, you know, and we know the obvious issues for the building, but we hadn't looked at, you know, what it would cost, you know, to do it, and I'm appreciative of an opinion that says that as a contractor, you're not sure that, that structurally that should be repaired. Um, I guess I would be, I mean, in, in an ideal world, I'd, I'd have numbers that would show what it would cost to repair it, what it would cost to replace it, and, um, and, you know, and then, then go from there. But so, so if, if, um, if we want to start by getting a hard and fast number on what it will cost to replace it where it is, I don't see any harm in having that number, it doesn't obligate us to anything and it's more information.
Well, I make permission out of that.
I think it's a generous offer.
Dan and Chip, check into what you have in a few weeks and maybe report back to us.
Give us some month, we'll get back to you at the next meeting on the fourteenth.
No, the next meeting's the ninth, eighth, ninth, ninth of April.
Ninth?
Ninth of April, yeah. You had the fourteenth, because we messed up the, earlier in the meeting.
The May meeting.
Yeah, the May meeting.
I'm pretty sure we can come back to a hot, hot number by then.
Sure. Sure. Would you also, if they're coming here to talk, would you mind letting us know? Because some of us might want to...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll keep you informed.
Yeah, great.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to...
No, I appreciate it, I think it's...
And Chip said you can do it right along with me.
Yeah, all right.
So I like the idea of them getting a, a new price for the building. The information that was in the town report said $400,000 to $500,000 for a new building. That was taking into consideration $40,000 for the purchase of land, $8,000 for a fence, $25,000 for septic system, $10,000 for a well, $385,000 for a building, which was based on the building that Mount Holly constructed and that we showed pictures of, and $15,000 to put the road into it. So that came to $483,000.
So there's a lot of potential savings there if we had it on this location, instead of moving it.
Correct.
So, but $385 was the hard and fast, the building, is what you had?
That's what Mount Holly spent on their building.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not sure if that is a Morton building or not, and it may be a different size than what we need.
Yeah.
Well, so...
I think we should come up with a hot number for, for this site.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea.
We should come up with a number, and what I have heard from people is that some people voted it down, like Mike Abbott, because they didn't think the building we were proposing had the things in it that it should have, and they wanted to see more things in it, like a crane.
Mm-hmm.
And they said you can't do that for $300,000. So... I think there was a lot of question, and people want to see some hard numbers before they make a decision.
Um... My own thought is that, um... Well, first of all, let's, let's, so we've got a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to authorize Dan Garceau and Chip Wright to, um, to go to Morton Building and get a hard and fast number on what it would cost to replace the building we have on site.
But what, I'm...
Uh, this motion was made by Paul and seconded by Steve.
So discussion on the motion.
Yeah.
What difference does it make, the price of the building where it is?
Well, because...
Now, let Dan answer it, please.
What difference does it make?
Yeah.
The price of the building?
Yeah.
Or put it down a different site?
Right.
There's no difference, it's just what you're, what you're adding is all those numbers you just came up with.
Now... On top of the building. Earlier, you said the price was tearing the building down and putting a new one up.
Right.
Is that them tearing it down, or the town crew tearing it down?
I, I believe that the, the, the total price came from them. The total price came from them.
So that would be your big difference if they're not tearing a building down?
And it would be nice to, to know that on site. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with asking them what it would cost to put a building on a different site too, but...
Well...
I mean, I'm sure they'll give us a quote anywhere, the problem is we don't have a site.
The thing is, do you want to spend that extra money? I, it seems to me, from what I've...
Wasted money.
I've been here 24 years. The taxpayers here in town don't, don't really appreciate spending a whole lot of money on anything if you've got something in use.
Right.
But...
Well, the whole thinking was that we were not going to have a tax increase, because we would continue with the building reserve fund, like we had in the past, so we're going to keep roughly $30,000 in a fund, so the, the bond payment would not exceed that.
Yeah, I think we started that building reserve fund when I was on the board, along with an equipment fund. We started those funds.
Right.
That's how we came up with the money for a hybrid.
Yeah.
And this equipment.
But, but it is a challenge, because like this year, our budget did go up, um, and, um, we all tried to keep the budget down, and in order to do that, because we had other expenses this year, we only put $15,000 into that fund.
Right.
So it's not to say that some years it won't be a little bit of a hardship, it can't be a complete, it doesn't cost us anything, because that is $30,000 that would be tied up every year on that, that if we had other needs come up, would not be available for other things. So...
That's why, you know, I think we're crazy to go buy chuckle in, because you're going to pay $80,000 for the land, you're going to put a mound system... What?
Forty, he wanted for the land.
He wants to sell both lots, I already talked to Byron about that. He wants both of those lots to go, and he wants eighty, he wants $80,000 for those two. Then you've got to put a mound system in, that's going to cost you another $50,000.
He told me forty...
Power, you're going to have a well, then you're going to have a drive line.
That's what I...
Then you're going to do it for what you said.
Well, so, you know, we can, we can...
These are all the prices that the people that do that gave me.
We can tackle this problem, you know, I, I think the important thing is that we're continuing collecting information, and this seems to me an important piece of information to get, is a hard and fast number of what it will cost us, Steve says, to tear down what we've got and to put something else up here. Let's get that number. Um, so, you know, I, I would, uh, you know, well, any further discussion, I would, I would call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Um...
Yeah, I would love to see a new building on the site, I really would, but...
I know you would.
It's extra money, a lot of extra money.
Town's not going to go for it, so...
Yeah. Yeah.
Put a new building here and keep it within region.
Right.
And down here, it takes care of the Borough Hill first. That's the worst part, that and Parrish Hill, the worst two places on this, when it's slippery, then through slippery.
I can ask for that, so I can travel them both?
So, I mean...
Just a little more discussion on that, going along with what you're saying. Right now, we're hauling, we're hauling sand and gravel here. We're going to have to haul it all the way up there.
Right, then haul it all back.
I don't know.
Yeah, well...
And, and if I may, may I ask a question about, about the hauling? We're, we're using our town trucks, employees' time, all, all, all material here, what? Is there any way we could get someone to haul by the trail load? Pay someone to haul by the trail load and dump it here, and use our trucks to fix, our trucks and our men to fix the road rather than all that material for this yard? It doesn't make any sense to me, but maybe there's a reason for it, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah. Um... I think it was last year we had, Charlie was on vacation, and I believe it was just Bovie that was hauling by himself, or maybe Donnie, but we brought in a half a year's supply of sand in a little over two days.
Yeah.
And that was days that... Yeah, I mean, it was over with. Till this year, we've been hauling, because we've had all these little short storms, small ones, we can't keep up with that, and we, we never did have a full stock half a winter like we usually do, supply, but being that short a distance...
Yeah.
I don't think it saved a whole lot, but it's something to check into.
I doubt you save anything with a tractor trailer.
I watched the tractor trailer deliver salt the day of the election, and he cut two tires pulling out of here, and he put, and wiped out the car, the tires that were in here.
Yeah, so, I think it's just checking.
Which is why it's not a good location.
All right.
Well, I got to disagree with that, but...
Me too.
Well, also, the idea was to have two stockpiles, one at the corners, one here, just like Wallingford, has one in Wallingford Center and one over in East Wallingford. That's where you cut down on your truck mileage and your time.
We talked about that when I was on the board too, and then you have to get the loader up there.
That's why we have the loader and now the tractor with the bucket.
Or keep the loader there, and if we can't do it, so, uh, we, we discussed that too in, in, in deep, in, in length, when I was on the board.
There's a lot of disadvantages that'll pop up by moving it, but I'm not going to get into that. Let's check on the price of the building.
Let's check on the price and, yeah.
That'll be a good avenue to start.
It's like killing an onion, let's get that layer first.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Um, so, before we go into executive session, any other business? And, um, darn, I had some other business.
So we're going to do both the advertisement and...
Yeah, well, we're going to, we have to go to executive, because what we've got to talk about is, goes to negotiations, so we just need an executive session for that.
Yeah, tell them, I'll, then just wait until they get back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather wait for that. But the other thing, um, I remember now what it was, is that I wanted to bring up about the roads, is that I got a call tonight before I came from somebody who was very concerned about Dambie Hill Road in front of the Raish Farm, the potholes, and, um, up in front of Annie Rothman's. And I told him that you and I had talked about it already this week, and that that, we, we were on it at some point, that we were aware and, and on it, and I also did tell him that we have larger plans for more major repairs to that stretch of road, um, shortly. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that...
That's a go down right there where the tire breaks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so people are having a problem with it, so, um, so I want to pass that on to you.
They're on Little Hill now, uh, because we got a major mud problem over there to start with.
Yeah, I saw Larry going over there too.
Little Village.
Yeah, it's a little village, they were going to the west side, I saw them go there to that hill, yeah. So, when they finish on the west side is the next, next up on...
If they can break somebody loose, and if Tommy, I know Tommy's got plant material, maybe we can patch that section right there by races and maybe put a load on.
Yeah.
Just see if they can just spread it over that, and, because that is a bad pothole.
Yeah, yeah, people, people are afraid of that.
And they definitely hit it hard when they do, because I sit there and watch them when they go over there. I'll jar your teeth, okay?
I've seen it on the road here yet, has it?
No, not, not in all the places, actually, Dambie Mountain Road is dried up fairly well, but boy, it's got potholes.
Oh, yes, and I, I have heard some complaints this week about Dambie Mountain Road too.
Only trail with the stuff over top of these roads that is already frosted, the frosts never going to come out.
Nope. Nope, you got to, you got to scrape below the potholes in order to get them out, and they still come back, but they don't come back as bad, but... Again, you really can't touch the roads this time of year with a frost, because like tomorrow's going to rain, if we touch them roads, it's going to turn into a slot.
The stuff you put on top though, the frosts never going to come out.
Nope. About we can patch a few of the holes and wear spots, and I'll, I'll have to call Charlie in the morning.
Right, all right, good. Any other business? No, okay.
Just a question.
Sure.
Um, then my term is up on the planning permission, 2020.
Yes.
And I did put in a letter of intent.
You did put in a letter of intent, I saw that at the last meeting. Um, I think we were going to do appointments, um, at the April meeting, because we wanted to advertise in case other people wanted to put in names. So please join us at the April meeting.
I will be, because I'll be at the Rotten Regional.
Oh, okay. All right, but we do have your letter, absolutely.
I'll be right home.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
At the Rotten Regional. And, um, I know there was some, some concern voiced about, one of my commissioners is not, has not been coming to meetings for quite some time, and that's Mary Keys, and I just did reach out to her, and she got back to me and said she just has not had the time.
Okay.
So she's deciding, you know, whether she wants to continue or put in a resignation, but she will reach out to you folks.
Okay, because if we know that she is, then we can advertise that there's some additional positions still, great, good.
And I'll reach out to her again with that tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I told her I would mention it, and my powers comes as, as possible, because this job does take a minute, I don't want to.
Right. Right. And then I had seen an email that for the May agenda, is that when you all want to put on the approval? The reflecting on, reviewing the plan, the updated plan and asking for approval?
Now, turning the plan over to us for our hearing.
So that's, that's the process, is in May, we would vote, turn it over to you to, for you to have just your townwide here? Is that the process?
That's...
Yes, um, the plan expires on May 15.
Okay.
Okay.
So after that, they turn it over to us, but we have to have advertised 30 days that the public hearing on the select board's part will be at our meeting.
Okay. All right. Anybody get that?
And, you know, based on the turnout that they had, and since it's not like a whole redo of the plan, it's more of an update, I don't envision it taking a ton of time.
It shouldn't, and then if it passes, it's good for eight years.
Was it at five last time?
Yeah, they changed it.
Okay.
We missed that cutoff, so ours was five, and then everybody the year after got the eight.
Oh.
So we will have the eight this time.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other business? You have a business?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Well, we should make a motion to, we have to go into executive session, yeah. So, thank you, everybody.